Good morning and welcome to this, the Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee. I note that we have all committee members in attendance. I will proceed to the acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as the custodians of the lands, winds and waters we all share. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and the stories of a proud people. I know we do, first of all, are there any declarations of interest? Any councils aware of any declarations of interest? No, proceed through to business outstanding. I understand that the first matter of business outstanding is to remain on the table and is likely to be presented at the next round of committee. Any questions? Good. The matter on notice relating to invasive weed control Bremavale Park, I believe that was a matter raised initially by councillor Augustine. Has that matter been addressed to date?
Yes, Chair, an email was sent out to all councillors responding to that matter.
Very good, and councillor Augustine, you're satisfied with the response?
Yeah.
Thank you, all good. Then we'll proceed to the next matter, which is item one, confirmation of minutes of the previous committee meeting of the 22nd of July. Are there any omissions, alterations required in relation to that, those minutes? If not, I'll put the matter to the vote that they are a true and accurate reflection of those, that meeting and the minutes accordingly. All those in favour? Oh, sorry, seconded by councillor Doyle. All those in favour? Against, that's carried. Item two relates to the IGO transport strategy. Are there any questions? I would like to call up the officer to give a, to give a brief precis. It is an extremely detailed report. And may I start by congratulating our council and the staff involved for putting together such a detailed forward planning document? If there are questions? Are there any questions? No? Would you like to just give us a, just a couple of minutes precis of, of the report that we're adopting today?
Yeah, sure.
And its impacts on our future?
Sure, so Jessica Cartledge, I'm the Principal Transport Planner in council's Transport and Traffic Team in the Infrastructure Strategy section. Okay, so the IGO Ipswich Transport Strategy is a result of three years of hard work from council, where we undertook a review of IGO, the City of Ipswich Transport Plan from 2016. So really, it's about, the old IGO, it was, it was targeted towards 435,000 people and a lot has changed since then. There's been a lot of disruptive transport technology, our population projections have changed, all of the infrastructure projections have changed. So really, it's responding to all that change, but also through years of, of community engagement and listening to the people about what they really need for the transport network. So key components of the strategy involve the opportunities and challenges that Ipswich are going to face up to 2046 and a population of 533,000 people approximately. It also looks at, outlines a new vision statement and new objectives for council on what we're going to, what we want our transport system to look like, and then gives us six strategic directions on what we're going to do to get to our vision. And also puts forward an implementation mechanism. Okay, so do you want me to keep going or?
Oh, no, you're doing very well so far.
Right. So essentially, we've aligned it to, to our future. It's four, it's four themes and the new Ipswich City Plan 2025. It's very different from the old IGO in 2016, so it just focuses on policy. So it's that very high level sort of document and all of the detail of the network planning and all of the implementation that's in our subsequent network action plans and the newly introduced IGO implementation programme. So that sort of outlines all the details of how we're going to get to our vision statement. It's a change from very mode specific, so looking at just road network, freight network, active transport, to making it more outcome based. So we're looking for connected, productive, safe, inclusive, healthy and well. And so we also have, changing from it just being, having a mode share target as the performance indicator to being, having 11 performance indicators that are related back to our objectives. Also that we have this very specific line of sight from the works that we're doing in planning, but also capital works, that line of sight back up through the IGO transport strategy and then to our future, our corporate plan. That's the intent.
Very good, thanks, Miss Cartledge. Just a couple of questions. So obviously, we've just recently released and commenced our new planning scheme.
Yes.
So how does it link in with that? With that, has it got that link?
Yes, yes, so it definitely does. So it's to do with the population and demographic forecasts and also it links in with the L-Gip, which is also used within the planning scheme. So that is the primary links, but it's also, the role is also to challenge the L-Gip to try and get people to move in a more efficient and more sustainable way, so that then there are less infrastructure costs for council as well in the long term. So we're trying to be more sustainable, do more with less through this strategy.
Very good, and noting that you said that there's been a lot of changes since the initial IGO plan came into being back in roughly 2016. So how flexible is the, is the current one with respect to what might happen over the next 10 years?
That's down to the nature of it because it's at the policy sort of level. So we say in there, look, we want to try and get, for example, a more resilient network. So that's quite a broad statement. It still gives us flexibility as a council to then sort of, okay, there might be something new innovative that's happening in the resilience space. So then we can sort of, it still links with our policy direction, but we can then go and investigate that area. So it's keeping it at that policy level, gives us that flexibility. It's more in the detail and the network action plans, which are a bit more certain, that are a bit more structured.
So it will remain like a living document?
Yes.
In many ways, the same as our planning scheme?
Yes.
Can be adapted?
Yeah.
As the needs?
Yeah.
Or whatever disruptive?
Transport technologies, yeah.
Technology comes in, so.
Yeah.
Very good, so, and it's good to hear.
Yeah, so the intent would be like every five years, you might do like a light review just to make sure that there's nothing major that's, that changes. But then we can change direction through the IGO implementation programme more specifically because that's more adaptable. That's something that we're trying to look at updating every year. So that's how we can navigate the change.
So we actually got that at like a five yearly review?
Sorry, yeah, it's a typical transport planning policy. You try and do a light review every five years, major review every 10.
Very good, thank you. Is there any other questions in relation to the policy? Very good, thank, oh, sorry, councillor Augustine.
Thank you. Could you just let me, I just want to know, want to understand a little bit better how the, the better bus network works in with this?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, and how, yeah.
That's okay.
Yeah, with that public transport.
Not a problem. Okay, so there's probably two components. So one of the strategic directions focuses on encouraging, encouraging public passenger transport in Ipswich because it's a more efficient way to move people. So in that aspect, we look at it from a perspective of, okay, so what kind of public transport network would benefit Ipswich? Though we are not the provider, so it's something that council advocates to TransLink to do. So then that's when it links with the Better Bus Programme and the regionally significant project. So we would work on this planning, on what public transport network could be, could benefit Ipswich. We would then work with Dan Heenan and Kate's team and go, hey, if you're looking to amend or evolve the regionally significant project relating to the Better Bus Network, these are ways that we would suggest we could do that. And then council as a body then advocates to the state government. So that's sort of how they link through.
Sorry, because I was looking at the better bus net, we've got some funding for more?
Yes.
More?
Over the next three years?
Yeah, and in particular, I'm just looking at Red Bank Plains because we've only got one for that whole big suburb. There's one route at the moment. I think there's a couple more coming.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, and I just thought, hmm, I think, I was thinking that we needed more.
There's always opportunity to evolve and to do more. So definitely, we can have those conversations if you want on what, on what your suggestions might be. But this platform sets the precedence that we want to encourage more public passenger transport. So just by saying that, that then gives us the policy platform to have these conversations, identify what council and also Ipswich residents want, work it through the Public Transport Advocacy in Action Plan, which is the network plan that sits beneath it, and then work with Dan Heenan's team and then as, okay, how do we advocate this to the state government to get the outcome that we need for the community?
Great, because I, I drive past this one bus stop very regularly. It's been there for a couple of years and no buses stop at it. So it's like, oh, is this going to be in the next?
It was a very strong message from the community over the three years of engagement. They want better public transport and active transport in the community. We took that message on, that's why it's a key strategic direction of the plan.
Thank you, thank you.
Can I, can I just raise through the chair just another issue about the bus stops? And this, this is more on the planning side. I could probably identify half a dozen areas where bus stops have been put in. There've never been a bus there and years and years later, but real estate agents use that as a selling point. And people coming to an area would think, well, there's a bus stop there, there is a bus or it'll be coming soon. I think some of them should be just removed if they're either never going to be used or if they haven't been used for 10 years and not likely to be used for, you know, another 20 years. Yeah, I think, I think you can have that sort of wrong effect. I could nominate just in one suburb, two or three of these. So maybe that's, planners can sort of look at that and.
Yeah, so I know as a development requirement, in a way, they just put in a bus bay, but not the actual bus shelter. And that tries to limit the impact to the community, thinking that there's going to be a bus route there straight away.
But we, we do approve the signs too, the, the signs are there.
Yeah.
Even without a bus shelter. And that gives a false impression.
Yeah, it does, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Probably the issuance of the signs is probably the issue at the end, isn't it? Whether?
Yes.
Whether they should be put up if there's no dedicated route.
Well, if it's a new development adjacent or nearer an existing route, then we know it's going to be. But if it's, there's no real, real prospect, not, not just it might be a route in, you know, 20 years.
Very good. Chair? Yes, thank you councillor Martin.
Thanks, and thanks very much for the presentation. But there's something I wanted to raise and it might, I don't think it's unique to Division Four, but it's certainly noticeable in Division Four, that our bus stops are not only used by TransLink buses. Our bus stops are used by school buses, they're used by the rail bus that runs from Leydeley to, to Rosewood. So even though it may appear a bus stop, you know, isn't used very much, if a young child is getting off a bus, getting off a bus at that bus stop once a day, that justifies the bus stop. There's certainly nothing about numbers, you know? It's not like, you know, if there's zero people we see using a bus stop, we pull out a bus stop. You know, and we can't keep track of this. Yeah, of course, school buses often just stop where.
Excuse me, Chair, point of order, are we still in questions or are we in discussion?
Well, I do believe he's coming to a question.
Yeah.
In the same way that councillor Tully was.
Unfortunately, we don't.
Sorry?
No, and I'm keen to contribute, but I'm waiting for it to be moved and seconded so I can contribute to discussion as well.
Well, I'm happy for the councillor to continue.
Almost finished. Unfortunately, we don't have this data.
Thank you. Is there any further questions of the officer? If not, I'd thank Miss Cartledge for her efforts and, well, for answering her questions. But more importantly, I pass on to the GM. If you can please let all staff that have been involved in the IGO document, yeah, congratulate them for their work putting it together. I'll now open it up for discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jess. Any discussion?
Is the matter being moved and seconded?
Well, okay, we'll move the, the recommendations, which is, I believe, just to adopt, approve the strategy and summary report and the IGO Ipswich Transport Strategy Technical Report. Or it's all approved. So thank you, moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by councillor Doyle. Do we have any discussion?
If I may, Chair? Thank you. This strategy sets out council's focus for transport as we evolve as one of Queensland's fastest growing cities. As we prepare for the future, we must address the resilience of our transport networks to extreme weather, looking at emerging transport technologies and the need to deliver more with fewer resources. Public transport is a key focus for the plan and while council does not have any control over the extending of our public transport or improving the frequency of public transport, we still continue to advocate strongly to the state government for major road upgrades and public transport improvements. The fact remains that many people are using their car because they don't have an easily accessible alternative. But the truth is that we can't build our way out of congestion alone with road upgrades because it is cost prohibitive. The council is responsible for, for over 1,200 kilometres of local roads, 1,929 kilometres of pathways and bikeways and about 700 bus stops. We know that by 2046, there'll be about 2 million trips per day on Ipswich roads and 85% of those will likely be undertaken by private vehicles. And we know that from this study too, that in the strategy, that 56% of these trips are forecast to be less than 10 kilometres. We know that our freight demand will more than double by 2046. So we must continue to proactively seek to meet the needs of our community through advocacy and pursuing new partnerships across government, industry and within the community. Ipswich requires a sustainable road network, a new Bremer River crossing, an infrastructure that recognizes Ipswich's role as South East Queensland's preeminent freight hub. I'd like to acknowledge the extensive community and stakeholder consultation that has gone into this strategy over the past three years and thank the teams for that. The Shapier Ipswich page received 7,858 views and there have been 17 community pop-up stalls for the community to speak with a transport planner, as well as many more consultations with industry groups and community groups. Community feedback helps shape the six strategic directions and 18 approaches, which reflect the diverse need of our residents for a more responsive transport network. It is my hope that we can use this IGO transport, Ipswich Transport Strategy 2025 as a powerful advocacy tool for attracting state and federal investment, building partnerships with transport agencies, industry and neighbouring councils. Also, it will help us to align with the major opportunities that are coming up, such as the 2032 Brisbane Olympic and Paralympic Games, to deliver lasting transport projects. Thank you, Chair.
Any further discussion? If I may, I'd just like to commend this report to not just the council. And I know that it does come before council next week through our committee report. I also commend it to the people of Ipswich to take the time to read through this document. And yes, it is a big document, has a lot of information in it. But at the end of the day, this is just as important as our planning scheme document. This is all about the future of our connected city. And in many respects, the most active element of that connected city is the people. So if, if people would like to see change with respect to how they move around our communities, first go to this document and have a look at what the document does have planned. And obviously, it is, in many respects, as has been described to us, a policy framework for our direction forward. But just as importantly, it is a community that drives what that future will look like. We can continue to be a car-driven society, but in many respects, that's not going to be the way forward for a growing city, a city like Ipswich, as the mayor has already highlighted, that our population will double in the next 20 years. So therefore, there needs to be other options. This document helps provide for those options, but at the end of the day, it is the user that will demand them. So I commend this to not just the council, but also to the community of Ipswich to have a look at this document, give your feedback. As we've already highlighted, it is a living document. If there are changes needed in the future, be it for community habit or some other disruptive technology that might come in to change people's habits with respect to their movements, this document is able and flexible enough to be changed in that respect. So again, I take this opportunity to thank all involved. Thank you, Jess, for your work and your team who have been behind putting this document together. And I know you've spent enormous hours putting this together and it's a very concise document. Thank you very much. And now the matter has been moved. I've put the, the recommendation to the vote, all those in favour? Against, that's carried unanimously, thank you. Item three, personal tribute in council's open space and road network in relation to an assessment for application for Mrs Doris Jeffrey. Is there any questions in relation to this matter? There being no questions, I've put the recommendation, I move the recommendation. Is there a second, councillor Doyle? Thank you. Any discussion? Any discussion? Yes, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Chair. Mrs Doris Jeffrey was a member of the Ipswich Croquet Club for 35 years, holding all the various positions that she could possibly have, I think, on the management committee, including president, mainly in a volunteer capacity. Doris was a life member and was also the oldest member of the club. And it's when I first met her, as she was celebrating her 100th birthday with one of the last letters from the late Queen Elizabeth II. I cannot think of a more fitting tribute than a commemorative plaque on a seat at Doris's beloved Ipswich Croquet Club. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, now, fitting tribute to Doris is a former patron for the croquet club, involved with the club for many years. I know that Doris has been, was a very influential member of the club and well respected. And, and not many people would know that the club in itself is, I think, the second oldest croquet club in Queensland. So being somewhere around 110 years old. So it's a historic club and part of that historic club now is Doris Jeffrey. So I put the recommendation to the vote, those in favour? Against, that's carried unanimously. Item four, Asset and Infrastructure Services Capital Delivery Report. Are there any questions in relation to the report? Ms Mackenzie, would you like to speak to any highlights within the report?
Thank you, Chair. This is the capital delivery report, report from June. So it is a month or so behind, however, it demonstrates the, what was achieved in capital for the 24, 25 year, which was over 97% of the capital programme, which given the, the weather events we had, was a great achievement by the team. We were able to complete all the road resurfacing works planned for the year. And during the month of May, June, sorry, some of the achievements for the pavement rehabilitation works in Jasmine Street were completed. And significant progress on the stage two Springfield Green, Green Bank Anterior upgrade, where most of the reinforced earth wall was completed during that month.
Thank you. Questions? Questions, put the, the recommendation is to receive a note. I move that, is there a second up? Is there a second up? Councillor Martin, thank you. Any discussion? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Chair. I do find this to be one of the most important reports that we do have come to council. It's the core business of what we, we deliver on. I was very pleased to see the end of your expenditure, but all but catch up to the adopted budget of just over $100 million for the financial, financial year. Significant progress was made on major projects, including Springfield Parkway, Stage Two, Ripley Road, Stage Two, the rubber soft fall and organic soft fall replacement programme were completed. And council's also taken delivery of a wood chipper for hoists, multiple trailers, two New Holland tractors, a grader and excavator for Toro Motors, which I know I much loved, a Volvo compacter and two Isuzu trucks. So good to see these things will take time to bring on board, as well as the full support of council with the procurement teams and so on. So no, well done, thank you very much, Chair.
Councillor Doyle?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I concur with the mayor's commentary. I just want to highlight the, the soft fall throughout our playgrounds across Ipswich. Obviously, it's something that's really important to our residents, our, our littlest residents. So delighted to see that that's finally been done. Obviously, post floods, there were lots of, there was a lot of work to be done. So I'm glad to see that work completed. And just calling out, obviously, our provisional projects that we've delivered on under the programme for councillor Antonelli and I, that is the Stip Switch on a playground, the Dog Bowl, the Fail Park Dog Bowl, Collingwood Drive, the electronic speed awareness sign, and importantly, Ferret Street Savers, crossing those pedestrian improvements for the safety of our residents in that area. So thank you to the team for delivering. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any further commentary? Just, just in closing, I just want to highlight the fact that as Ms Mackenzie did highlight, we came in at 97% of the budget. So that's very commendable to you and your team. But more importantly, and probably forgotten and not known to us now, is the impact that tropical cyclone Alfred had on, or could have had on that budget, had not it been so well managed. So I just want to commend you and the department for your efforts in getting, and I know that we were behind schedule for, by about two months in many respects because of tropical cyclone Alfred. And I just commend you and your team for being able to bring everything in under budget. And I think it's a great result. And as the mayor said, this is a very important document. And as the mayor said, this is a very important document, highlights last year's full expenditure of what is probably the biggest budget item within council. So job well done, thank you. All those in favour? All those in favour? Sorry councillor Tully, I didn't see your hand. That is unanimous, thank you. Next we move, and while we're waiting, I believe we're changing GMs. While we're waiting for Mr Davy to set up, is there any questions in relation to item five, which is the Planning and Environment Court Action Status Report? Albeit, any questions may require us to go into closed session. Are there any questions in relation to that? I do believe there has been an update in relation to some of these matters. Is that being circulated to all or was it just myself and the deputy chair?
Just yourself and the deputy chair, but I can provide a verbal update to the councillors if desired.
Are we able to do that in open session or should we close?
Yeah, it's fine in open session.
Okay. So I'll just ask Mr Davy to give us a bit of an update in relation to those two matters.
Yes, General Manager Brett Davy, just wanted to provide an update. There are a couple of the matters in the Court Action Status Report which were actually reviewed since the closure of the report. So the first item was reviewed on the 4th of August. And the outcome of that review is to, for the parties to review a revised acoustic assessment regarding the, the outcome for the acoustic barrier, which is the subject of that matter. The second update is on the second matter, it's on page two of the attachment. And in that case, there was a review on the 5th of August. And following that review, there was a procedure set down to finalise some expert reporting over the coming months. So expected that those reports will be finalised by around the 22nd of September, which will then provide for some discussions about how to progress that matter based upon the, the experts' advice.
So it's likely that both of these matters will still be on the agenda next round and potentially the following?
Yeah, absolutely. So they will definitely be on the, this report next round, probably for the balance of the year, I would expect.
Very good. Any further questions in relation to that? No, okay, well, it is a receive a note report. I move the motion, can I have a second, councillor Doyle, thank you? Is there any discussion? If not, I'll just speak to the fact that, again, it sounds like a broken record. We do raise this every round, the fact that we have two items on our agenda to the most, to most people in Ipswich, it's probably, doesn't mean much to them. But as a council, having, only having two matters before the court is a bit of a rarity, particularly for a council of our size. Most councils, even smaller than us, have potentially dozens of matters before the courts. So again, I put that down to the great management within the department. So thank you, if you can pass that on again. All those in favour? Against, that is carried unanimous. We now move to item six, delegation report. Are there any questions? There being no questions, again, it is a receive a note. I put the, the motion to the vote, or, sorry, I move the motion. Do I have a second up? Councillor Tully? Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favour? Against, that's carried unanimous. I do not believe there are any notices of motion. Are there any matters arising that we're aware of? I don't believe there is. Now for questions or general business, is there any general business questions? There being none. It's now 9.30, I imagine that the next, well, sorry, 9.28 is it? 29? I imagine the next meeting will commence at 9.39. Thank you very much for everyone's attendance.